Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the City Council to order at 6:05 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please take the roll?
Navarrete.
Here.
Wilson. Tillman.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Pat.
Smith.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Bless you. I didn't see Pastor Stokes. Is Pastor Stokes here? Are you representing Pastor Stokes? Like to come up and offer a word or prayer for... If you want to step to the podium.
Father God, we come to you at this hour just to say thank you. Thank you for all that you have done. Thank you for all that you are going to do. Lord, as we gather here today, we pray that you would get into the hearts and the minds that we can come together on one accord, that some good may be done. Lord, I pray that you would bless this government, bless the households of each of those that are here today, pray that they are able to return to their home and find it as safe as they have left it. Lord, we pray that you would bless each individual in this place. In your darling son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Can I ask his name? Can you cut it? Want to start this meeting by thanking my colleagues and thanking the public for the many cards, prayers, and the passing of my mother, Devola Johnson. This has been a week. Our last meeting, we gave prayers to Alderman Gardner, and the next day, my mother went to heaven. And I want to thank you guys because Alderman Gardner and I have had the same struggles, same challenges, same great times with our mothers and caring for them. And, you know, my mother lived with me for seven years, but I wouldn't take one moment back. She loved Calumet City and to the residents of Bernadine Manor, where my mother went to live and where she wanted to be. The residents of Bernadine Manor, I thank you guys for not only helping my mother those last three months, but also for welcoming her to the Bernadine Manor community. And for my family, I want to thank you for the prayers of support and just ask for a moment of silence, not only for my mother, but for Sandra Gardner as well. We can have a moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone. Item four on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment? If you can step to the mic, please.
Good evening, Mayor and the council. My name is Wynetta Thomas. I am a good-paying, tax-paying member of the Second Ward, and I would like to know why we no longer are able to have our meetings in a facility, in a building, as it was in the past. Yesterday, they had a meeting outside at the park that I could not attend because I'm a proud black woman. However, my hair does not know it's black. If I come in looking like this, I'm going to leave out with an Afro. Also, I have very sensitive skin. I will break out in a rush if I get too much sun on me. God forbid it should rain, or in the wintertime it snows, and we cannot meet outside, or we have to cancel our meetings. I was faithfully going to the meetings for the Second Ward. Also, when we were able to go to the... It was the first Monday to the police station for those meetings, the watch meetings. We don't have those anymore. I would love for our Second Ward people, as well as anybody else who live in Calumet City, who has a place where they can meet in an enclosure. You have to worry about little critters calling around and maybe four-legged or two-legged. I want to be safe when I'm coming to a meeting to learn about my ward and my city, and I would like for that to happen for the people in the Second Ward.
Work with your Alderman and find a place, which we've always done.
Well, we used to meet at the police on State Street. That's not available to us anymore?
If something comes up, no, it's not available. So if there's something else that happens, then yes, it's not available. But again, we'll get back to you and let you know. But I don't schedule those meetings. I can schedule Second Ward meetings if the community would like me to, but I would rather work with the Alderwoman to have regular meetings in your ward.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Jill, can you make sure you get...
Hi, my name is Ms. Dorsey, and I'm at 672 Benzley Avenue, and I've been out here for 24 years. And every now and then, they have different Aldermen. So every time, I didn't know what the last Alderman name was, I would come here. I would be given the wrong Alderman, and when I called him, he called me, called him, he'll call me back and leave on the voicemail. I'm not your Alderman. Never met the Alderman, don't know who the Alderman is, you know? And I like to meet that Alderman because, see, there's some things in the alley around my house. You've got a bandit house, nobody live there. Weeds are so high, the thing falling down. Then I've got a neighbor next door with weeds and trees and everything all up, nothing being taken care of. Uh-oh, nothing being taken care of. And then I've got a house to the right side of me. It'd be a lot of kids out there in the alley, you know? And you don't see the usual neighbor that lives there, so I don't know who live there because of the bunch of kids. So it would be nice if they had the police come along and see who stayed there, find out who stayed there. And in one house, nobody stayed there because everything is raggy, weeds high. And the one next to me, they said they've been bringing that person to court, but nothing being done, you know? And I talked to Jericho about all this, and I guess they put it all into pictures and everything, but I don't know what's going on. So you've got raccoon, you've got squirrel, you've got all kinds of stuff popping in and out, running through there, you know? So I don't know what's going on.
Okay. If you can give your information to Jill, who's sitting right there, we'll make sure your Alderman or Alderwoman gets in contact with you. The lady with the...
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And the City Council members. My name is Rochelle Marcelers. I live 365 on Campbell. Too bad Alderwoman Wilson isn't here because I wanted to commend her for the Second Ward meeting that we did have yesterday. I was outside in the cold, but it was a very good meeting. She had a lot of city officials there and departments that were able to answer the residents' questions and then give us updates on what's going on. So I really wanted to commend her on that. The next thing is the Burnham Bike Trail. By now, I know there's not going to be an inter-agency agreement. I think we talked about that two years ago. Once again, that area is growing like crazy, once again. I have went back there myself to try to pull weeds off of my fence, but it's just too much. I also was told when the city, and I have to thank you for cleaning that up for us, that there's poison ivy back there. So I really didn't want the residents, you know, trying to pull stuff up. I didn't know what poison ivy looked like, you know, back there, but it's getting to be a mess again. So there was a suggestion yesterday, last night, that maybe it's time for the residents to take some action. So I'm going to ask the residents on Campbell if they will make a call to the Forest Preserve. And then we're going to do a petition with signatures to let them know that we feel it's unfair that they come to a certain part on the trail and then they just stop. And then all rest of it looks like the prairie that's on the other side. So I just wanted to let you know that. And third, we're continuing to pray for you and the Aldermen, for your mother, and I have a card for you from the Block Club.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the City Council during public forum? Anyone else? If not, we will move on to item five on the agenda, which is approval of minutes. The minutes have been submitted to the Alderman. Are there any additions or changes to the minutes? If not, can someone make a motion to approve the minutes as so presented on the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Smith.
Yes.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Minutes passed, 6-0. Reports of standing committees. Finance Committee, Alderman Gardner.
No reports tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Safety, Alderman Williams.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Utilities, Alderman Patton.
Just one quick thing, Mayor. Calumet City Plumbing, in conjunction with the city, has begun the lead line replacement program for this year's phase. I've seen several homes in the Sixth Ward undergoing that work over the past couple of weeks. If you've got a notice on your door in the last month or two and have not yet called Calumet City Plumbing to schedule your replacement, please do so immediately before they move on to the next phase of this project, and would have to circle back to you. So I know the participation rate's been fairly low so far. There's a number of homes that still qualify for this phase that haven't signed up to get the work done yet, so please, you know, pay attention to the notice that was left on your door. Call the Water Department if you have any questions, or call Calumet City Plumbing. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Ordinances and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
No report. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Permits and Licensing, Alderman Smith.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Works, Alderman Navarrete.
No report this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. City Council Reports, Alderman Smith.
Yes, just want to remind the sub-corp residents that the next monthly seven-town hall meeting we held Saturday, July 15th, from 10:00 AM to noon at DA's banquet and event hall. If you have any questions on that, please contact the office at 708-891-8197, or email A. Smith, calumetcity@org. Also, that information will be published in the July news letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Sixth Ward, Alderman Patton.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Fifth Ward, Alderman Gardner.
No report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams, Fourth Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. First and Alpha God makes all things possible. I want to thank the residents that came out to the Third and Fourth Ward Meeting this past Monday. Just to let the residents know that your complaints and your express matters will be addressed as expeditiously as possible. Juneteenth celebration, June 17th, at the Calumet City Library starts at 11:00 AM and goes to 7:00 PM. I want to thank the council and the mayor for their support in putting this event together. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Third Ward, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just want to thank the residents that came out to the Third Ward and Fourth Ward Town Hall Meeting. I'm proud to report that 90% of the tasks that was given to us at the meeting have already been addressed. To the 10% of residents that have not been addressed yet, just know that the city is working on it. We'll get to you soon. If you all have any questions, feel free to call my office, 708-891-8193. Additionally, the July Town Hall Meeting will be canceled because of the holiday. Our next meeting will be in August, and we'll get more information out. That meeting is actually going to be block to block rather than at the Park District. And we are now officially planning the back-to-school picnic, which will be August 12th, so if any residents want to volunteer or participate, call my office again, 891-8193. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ed, could you... It's an echo on the mics. I guess he's going to test your voice for the mics.
Thank you, Mayor. Just an announcement, July 12th, we'll have a First Ward Town Hall Meeting, 6:00 PM at the VFW Hall located at 662 Hirsch. It's the corner of Hirsch and Pulaski. That's July 12th at 6:00 PM. We're hoping to get an update on funds received for the Burnham Corridor revitalization plan along with the State Street, what we dubbed the D-Sir, that runs through the First Ward all the way down to the Expressway, and then our town, our city town center plan. Update those... An update on those three ongoing plans in the First Ward, along with some feedback. I'll be asking for an Aldermatic Priority Program that the mayor has put out to us with feedback from the council and some thoughts on that. Again, that's July 12th, 6:00 PM, at the VFW Post on the corner of Hirsch and Pulaski. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. I have a couple items. Just want to announce, we started street sweeping, and we want to thank the residents who have moved their cars, and also thank Public Works for putting up the signs to notify the residents of street sweeping. We have more coming. We want to make sure that we keep our city clean. We also want to thank the residents who are participating and helping in moving the cars, and also our Police Department, who's going door-to-door and helping with notifying and then also working with residents, not ticketing them, but asking them to move their cars. So we want to make sure we all cooperate. Just want to make sure the residents are aware that we are, we started the street sweeping. The next item, we've... Our youth employment program. We've started that on June 5th. We have approximately 46 youth who are at various departments. We still have some slots open for anyone who want to get your kids out of the house this summer and get them working. The applications are online, but we're going to extend it to make sure that we give all of our youth the opportunity for employment. So you can get the application online, or you can call City Hall, 891-8106, and we'll make sure that we work with you. Today, we got another nine applications in. We want to, again, continue to have our youth employed. We got an extension of $500,000 from the state of Illinois for youth employment, along with our city's summer youth hiring program. So this is why we're able to hire youth through our program and start our summer camp, STEM Camp, as well. Today, we received notification, Ken, for awarding of our green alleys. Correct? We have the award letter for that. Do you want to talk about?
Yes, it's exciting that, as you all know, we were able to do four alleys last year in this Green Infrastructure Alley Program that where we can be able to finally start paving alleys and not have to deal with the stormwater issues. The MWRD, the Metro Water Reclamation District, was so impressed by our work here in the city that, and your support for it and your efforts to get this thing mobilized, that they have awarded another $800,000, more money, to do more alleys in Calumet City. So we're going to be identifying these alleys. We want to do this every year. We want to keep it going and build the success and do them in every ward. That's the goal, is to make sure we can get an alley done, at least one in every ward.
Accepted two wards. Exactly. So, yeah. Thank you, Ken, for that. Do you have any more engineering announcements, Ken?
Just that the sidewalk program will be going to bid in early July, hopefully before the 4th, and that we expect to be... Have the program completed by September.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Our last item, on, I believe, June 24th, we have a recycling, citywide recycling event with Representative Marcus Evans. We did send out communication. We will send out messages to residents to keep all and bring all your recycling material that you want, electronics and recycling, here at City Hall. We will get the time for residents and send it out to you, everyone, but this is a partnership with Representative Marcus Evans. It'll be here June 24th at City Hall for anyone who would like to recycle or get items shredded. Again, June 24th, here at City Hall. You got a time, Mayor? I'll get that time for you. I believe it's 10:00 AM, but I'll get that corrected. Is it going to be paper shredding as well? Yes. That's all I have under Reports, and I'll get that corrected time for you guys. The next item is Informational Items. Item number eight, which is Informational Items to be accepted and placed on file. Does anyone have any questions about Informational Items A8A through C? If not, is there most... Well, all in favor to accept a motion to accept it?
So moved.
Second.
Motion accepted, all in favor.
Aye.
Informational Items accepted, placed on file. Item number nine, are new business items? Are any questions about nine, D1 through three, new business items? If not, is there a motion to accept New Business Items nine, D1 through three?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Item E are building permits. Are there any... There are no garage construction, but these are building permits. Does anyone have any questions about the new fence construction? Item is presented on the agenda?
Yes. I think 956 Hirsch is going to be the Sixth Ward.
Alderman, can you make a motion to amend it to reflect the Sixth Ward and then motion to approve?
Sure. I would like to make a motion for 956 Hirsch with the installation of the privacy fence to be amended to the Sixth Ward.
So moved.
And motion amended, and then there's a motion to accept the new fence construction as listed, as amended, as presented on the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner as amended, second by Alderman Patton. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Stillman.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Gardner.
Smith.
Yes.
Navarrete.
Yes.
Item F are resolutions. We do not have Resolution Two on the agenda, so is the motion... Table this... That motion, that item, to the next agenda? We don't have the resolution, Alderman. Okay. So, Item F are resolutions one, three, and four. Alderman Tillman, is there a motion to approve Resolution and ordinances one, two, one, three, and four?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution and ordinances, items one, three, and four, as presented.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Smith. I heard him say motion. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Just before we get to Financial Matters, item 18 on the agenda deals with potential fireworks celebration that the police chief and the committee has requested. Our goal is to make sure that we have an event this year. The goal is to have this at River Oaks Mall, and it'll be a controlled event. I know we have our Assistant Chief Black here. I don't know, Assistant Chief Black, if you want to come up and talk briefly about our plan for the July 2nd fireworks, or if there are any questions about that. I know we did not discuss this matter, but that's something that... We didn't have a celebration last year, but the goal is to have it this year. It'll be at River Oaks Mall. It would be limited. It'd be a drive-through fireworks celebration, and then everyone will have to register online in order to be inside. So Chief?
Currently, you have more information than I have at this time about that. I wasn't included in that part of the portion about the discussion of the fireworks, but as far as staffing, we will have adequate staffing to ensure that the residents will be safe upon entry and exit and during the fireworks show.
I almost said, damn, why did I call you up?
That's all right.
But July 2nd, it'd be at the River Oaks Mall. The goal is to make it a controlled environment. So does anybody have any questions for the chief, or any questions, Alderman Gardner, about Financial Matters G1 through 21?
First question, item 14. Is this going to be a duplicate for 18, or is this something separate? And I notice, is the name of the company HireWorks, or is that a grammatical error?
Yes, that is a duplicate, Alderman. So we can remove item 14. The correct account number is item 18. That's what we got from the treasurer's office. So 14 is a duplicate. The correct account number is 18.
Okay.
And it is HireWorks, not fireworks.
So we're removing item 14?
Yes.
Okay.
If you can make that motion to remove item 14 and then approve the items as amended.
I would like to make a motion to remove item number 14, and I would like to make a motion to approve items under Financial Matters, 1 through 13, and 15 through 21.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman...
Point of clarity question, I think I missed something. What... Which company is the proper name?
HireWorks.
HireWorks?
Yes.
Okay. Because item 18 says something different.
Yeah, it should say HireWorks.
So we have to amend 18?
Yes. Amend 18, Alderman, to the correct company is HireWorks, not fireworks. So amended through the motion?
I would like to make a motion to amend the spelling of the fireworks company, to correct the spelling of the fireworks company in item number 18. As so amended.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Right, everyone, we do have a brief executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of pending probable litigation? Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of pending probable litigation in employment of a specific individual?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
We are in executive session at 6:35 p.m. We will come back public and conduct business, but we're in a brief executive session at 6:35 p.m. Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business at 6:40?
So moved.
Motion made, who made the motion?
Smith.
Smith made the motion, second by...
Gardner.
Gardner, to return to regular order of business at 6:48 p.m.
Yep.
We are at unfinished business. Alderman Navarrete, any unfinished business?
Nothing this evening, well, one thing. Look, Ken's still here, I guess, but I thought he might not be here. But just to follow up, we approved the interchange to sign for WSP. He said that Phase One project, if you could just talk to the timeline of that possible project, kind of just what it was, kind of touch on that.
Yes, Alderman. The timeline is that, the goal is to have this planning and environmental linkage study done by, led by WSP, to be done in 18 months. And the report is a, basically a pre-engineering report dealing with feasibility, environmental impact, displacement, and the traffic control there. They'll be looking at Dalton Road there, they'll be looking at the intersection that's right by there, and the safety issues, and then the interaction with the public. So there'll be a large public engagement element to it as well, to find out what the public thinks about it, a full interchange there. But it's an 18-month timeline, and as soon as the city executes the contract, WSP is ready to get started working.
Thank you.
And that's a what amount project?
The amount of, so that is funded by a grant from IDOT with federal money for planning and safety, and it's an $860,000 grant.
Thank you, Ken. Anything else, Alderman?
That was it, Mayor, thank you.
Unfinished business, Alderman Tillman? Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Williams?
Just one item, B, July meeting, as Alderman Tillman stated. Sorry. The July meeting for the third and fourth ward is canceled. The fourth ward will be doing street-to-street meetings starting in July, and the locations and times are forthcoming, so that communication will be disseminated as the dates arise. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Alderman. Fifth ward, Alderman Gardner, unfinished business?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Sixth ward, Alderman Padden, unfinished. Alderman Smith, unfinished?
Yes, just want to remind the residents of the seventh ward, please continue to send your concerns regarding any vacant properties so that I can ensure that those are addressed in a timely manner. And please attend the upcoming meeting next month, while I have an update on quite a few activities within the city and the seventh ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. I mentioned briefly the recycling event, the time, and June 24th is 10:00 a.m. to noon. So recycling event here at City Hall is 10:00 a.m. to noon with Representative Marcus Evans. So we will make sure we send out robocall, text messages, and also flyers to residents to bring recycling items and bring all your shredding items as well here at City Hall. There being no further business to come before the city council, is there a motion to adjourn at 6:52 p.m.? Motion made by Alderman Smith, second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams. Meeting adjourned at 6:52 p.m. Thank you, everyone. Good night.